Good morning, everyone. Father Graham?
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. O God, Creator and ruler of all, we ask your blessing on members of this county council, who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We pray that they may have wisdom, patience, the ability to listen to one another, and to the needs and desires of those whom they represent. That through their dedication and hard work, this county may duly prosper, and the life of all people enhanced. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Almighty God, the giver of all good things, without whose help our work is ineffectual, and without whose grace or wisdom is folly, grant, we pray, that in all our work for this county, we may be strengthened by your love and guided by the Holy Spirit, that we may seek to bring fairness, justice, and equity for all. We ask this through Jesus Christ the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like you to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Please be seated. Yes, well, thank you. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Starting on item one, apologies. Are there any apologies for absence?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Council. Yes, we do. We have apologies from councillor Mackenzie, councillor Shortland, councillor Wyomann, and councillor Gilbert.
Okay. Any further apologies? Moving on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Moving on to item three, confirming of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 17th of July 2025 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item four, chairman's correspondence. Bi-election of the Ecclesdale and Nosel County Electoral Division. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in extending the council's congratulations to Jeremy Perrett on being elected as the county councillor representing the Ecclesdale and Nosel County Electoral Division at the by-election held on the 17th of July 2025. Councillor Perrett, if you'd like to stand up and make yourself known. New face to many, old face to some. And while we're here, I'd also like to publicly thank councillor Perrett for inviting me on Tuesday evening to the fundraising event for the Staffordshire Yeomanry Museum, where we had a lecture from Sir Max Hastings on the yeomanry, and a very insightful evening that was. Thank you. Item five, statement of the leader of the council. Councillor Cooper, will you move the consideration of the statement, please?
Good morning, Chairman. Before I do that, I just want to read a statement out beforehand. Part of the chairman's questions, really. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, officers and those watching. As we convene today in this chamber, I rise to ask that we formally place on record our congratulations to one of Staffordshire's most iconic and influential companies, JCB, as they approach their 80th anniversary on the 23rd of October. Founded in 1945 by Joseph Cyril Bamford in Utoxeter, and proudly headquartered today in Roaster, JCB has grown from a small workshop into a global leader in construction and agricultural machinery. Yet despite its international success, JCB has remained firmly rooted in Staffordshire, the beating heart of this county and this country, providing thousands of jobs and opportunities for our residents. This milestone is not just about industrial achievement, this is about people. Generations of welders, fabricators, engineers, and logisticians have built JCB's legacy. It is about the local supply chains that sustain small businesses and skilled trades. It is about JCB Academy, the apprenticeship programmes that continue to inspire and equip young people with real careers in advanced manufacturing. JCB's story is a Staffordshire story, one of innovation, resilience, and community spirit. On behalf of this council, I extend our deepest thanks and warmest congratulations to everyone at JCB, past and present, for their extraordinary contribution to our county and to the country. It's also about innovation from the iconic backhoe to today's more efficient power chains. JCB's engineering has helped us deliver a safer, faster infrastructure for residents, and has showcased Staffordshire's ingenuity on the global stage. Over 3% of Staffordshire's GDP and 20% of its manufacturing. As a council, we will continue to create the conditions that help businesses like JCB thrive. On behalf of this chamber and the communities we serve, we extend our warmest congratulations to Lord Bamford, the Bamford family, and every member of JCB, past and present. Thank you for your investment in our craftsmen and women, and your faith in the county of Staffordshire. Let us celebrate this milestone with pride and look forward to many more years of a shared success. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Leader's statement. I'll have to shuffle my papers now. Here we go. I'll just read out the headlines that we've done over the previous number of months. Primaries from Staffordshire means business, street lighting, residual waste disposal frameworks.
Councillor Cooper, would you mind just hanging on a moment, please?
That's very kind, Chair. Thank you very much. No, you didn't spot me there. You know, that's absolutely fine. We'll all work with what we've got this morning, won't we? So that's absolutely fine. So, good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to see you all back after a long summer. And as it's my first time rising in the chamber since councillor Perrett's election, I'll say congratulations to him, a great election victory, and commiserations to Reform, who of course came third to the Greens in the election. But something where we have got unanimity around the chamber is our great pride and enormous support for JCB, a wonderful Staffordshire brand that has been championing our county around the globe with its fantastic products for a very long time now. And it is right that we mark that in this chamber, and that we have that accord around the chamber in all political parties, in all members, to say what a wonderful organisation, a great business for Staffordshire, employing many people here, and making our county a great place to do business. So, fully support your statement, leader.
Councillor Cooper, back to your statement.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll start again, because obviously we've got a bit of a technical hitch here, haven't we, this morning? But, yeah, great. Leader's statement. Staffordshire means business. The street lighting and residual framework we have, Treasury Management Report for the year ended March 2025, the Better Care Fund that we deal with, our integrated performance first quarter reports in 2526, Thomas Elaine School, Utoxeter. We do have lights coming on. That's all right. Political assistance, internal efficiency reviews, strategic reviews, highways, championing support for children, and additional needs. As you say, we've been a very busy council. Community safety, strategy development, member safety, trading standards, step-up enforcement activity, libraries and summer reading challenges, and a boost for tourism, visitor economy, Staffordshire History Centre, and accredited museums and museum status. These members should be all in your packs in front of you with full details, and I'm happy to take questions along with my cabinet members.
On statement one, do we have any speakers?
I'm just confused, me, sorry.
To talk about the West Midlands interchange work, actually. And it's something that we've been developing. I work for South Staffs District Council as well as Staffordshire County Council. So, we've been doing a lot of collaborative work on this over the last few years. So I just wanted to highlight how fantastically well that's been going. Obviously, this was the work of the previous administration, but I am pleased to see that it's continuing so favourably. Not really a great deal to see here in that aspect. I also wanted to go on to street lighting, but I'll wait till that comes up. Thank you.
Councillor Hales?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Can you tell me, leader of the council, will we outperform the national average with investment into Staffordshire? Thank you.
My deputy, who has the details about our economic investment. Thank you.
The M6 junction 16. We are just procuring the work right now to really sell the 5500 development that is to come on. Now, this work, previous administration did start, but it's work that we will deliver at the highest of level. And this is where we work across all districts without political favour, because this is about Staffordshire. It's about business, it's about growing our economy. There is a slight heed of warning. Nationally and globally, we are seeing a tightening within our economies. The job numbers are dropping slowly, the job availability is retracting. And that's why we have to work even harder in Staffordshire, so that we outperform the national average. And it's more than just job numbers, it's about average wage growth, of which Staffordshire sadly does fall behind, and it has done for many years. We must bring in that higher average wage, the higher skilled jobs. This brings into our colleges and our universities. This brings in about bringing people inwards, not people wanting to leave. And again, it's about branding Staffordshire, and this is something we do across all districts without political favour, because it's about Staffordshire. And together, as I keep saying, we will make this count to the beating heart of the country once again, just as we're in the industrial revolution, just as we will be in the tech revolution going forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sean Bagley?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question relating to point one of the leader's statement, Staffordshire means business. I'm so very glad to see future support for JCB Live Golf. Would you consider it strange that previous administrations chose not to support such a valuable local event, how it at one of the world's most famous companies in our home of Staffordshire? Thank you.
Bagley, I think again we're going to have councillor Murray answer this question. It seems to be his brief and portfolio. Thank you.
Our leisure. And it's more important than just the jobs it brings, it's the advert it sells for Staffordshire itself. The Live Golf Tournament is a global tournament. It's in the hundreds of millions watched it live across the globe. It is a marker, a beacon that should have advertised Staffordshire. Yet on its branding everywhere, Staffordshire was not mentioned. I have already started conversations with JCB. We'll be having meetings with the event organiser going forwards. But next year, it will be saying Staffordshire, so the world actually knows Staffordshire. And it's important to bring in, we do have the local visitor economy partnership. We have huge brands across Staffordshire, global brands like Alton Towers. We have Drayton Manor, Waterworld. Our second host is actually Trenton Estates. We have global brands that have been picked from all over the world, in my own canic, with MacArthur Glen Shopping. Shopping again is tourism. And we must hit it across all boards, across all sectors, and that includes our business tourism. With the huge business development coming into our county, business tourism will be essential. And that requires hotel spaces, it requires more hotel and investment, and it requires the confidence, that consumer and business confidence to know, Staffordshire is somewhere to invest, it's somewhere to be proud of, and it's somewhere that is seen on a global stage. It's where we never miss those opportunities again, when we have international tournaments, international events, we make sure Staffordshire is mentioned upon it.
Thank you. Councillor Farrell? Councillor Kelly?
Hello. I think this was hinted on in the first question, but I would just like some clarity on it. So do you believe the planned increase in support for business and tourism will assist in increasing the average wage, as well as increasing the amount of jobs in the area? And will these changes be throughout Staffordshire, not just in the south? And will they include rural areas as well? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Yeah, I concur. I think our aim here is to improve the lives and quality experience of people that live in Staffordshire. Our aim is to try and get the amount of salaries that individuals earn up. Compared to the national average, we are fairly low. High employment, but low levels of actual take-home pay. So that's one of the key things that we want to do going forward. So, thank you. I'll ask my colleague to elaborate on that.
Councillor White?
Continuation of a lot of the good work that we were doing on economic development during my stewardship, actually, when I was the cabinet member for Economic Development and Skills, but also the longer-term project that we had as Conservatives when we took over from Labour, where I think it's fair to say that the economy of Staffordshire was fairly low-skilled in too many places, and an average pay was an issue. It's unfortunate when you have to fact-check in the council chamber, but the leader and deputy leader should be aware that actually, due to our work, average pay in Staffordshire has actually met the national average now. Now, that doesn't mean there's further to go on that, but that is a simple fact, that we've hit the national average, we hit it a couple of years ago. And so I fully support the continuation of that work, it's really important, but I don't think we can pretend that that work hasn't been ongoing for some time. Similarly, it's interesting hearing these claims about Live Golf. And we've got two bites of the cherry on travel and tourism, haven't we, on the agenda, which is lovely, because it's a big success story? And again, something where we can talk about the Conservative's success, that 30% growth in our travel and tourism sector since the pandemic, which we played a big part in supporting, and we can talk about that a bit more later, perhaps. But Live Golf, this council provided enormous logistical support to Live Golf, to make it happen. For those of you who live in East Staffordshire or visit East Staffordshire, like councillor Hales, you'll know that the enormous amount of traffic and the visitors that are generated by Live Golf is one of the biggest challenges. This council put its shoulder to the wheel in making sure that that all runs smoothly, so that it could come back for a second time, and we hope for many years to come. And it was promoted as a Staffordshire event. So it's a shame that we have to fact-check these things. I hope we won't have to do too much fact-checking of claims in this chamber, and we can debate real issues and talk about the future a bit more. But there we go. It's nice to see, though, a lot of that good work that we were doing continuing under Reform. Thank you very much for doing that.
Councillor Murray?
I'm glad the statement had finally finished. I thought this was about questions. Fact-check, average wage is still below average in Staffordshire to the UK? Yes, it has risen, but so has everybody else. We have not caught up. Most of our jobs are in the lowest sector. That is shelf-stackers. Even our care workers, which has the highest demand right now for job vacancies, are being paid minimum wage or just above. These are facts in the statement. Most of our jobs are still in the lowest-paid sectors in our county. We do not have the skillage up there, we do not have the investment that's yet come through. It is coming. And yes, the previous admin did start these huge, great projects, and they must be acknowledged for that. They did the bid, they did the work, they got it through. We will now deliver it on, we will promote it forwards. And this is where we work, like we have with South Staffordshire, and we will with all other areas, obviously with the Moorlands, Utoxeter, with the 5500 coming through to Stoke, right across Newcastle. It involves all of us, all the time, because it's about Staffordshire always. And we will bring up that average wage to be the national average. We will get the higher skilled jobs, and we will get the higher engineering, the high-tech jobs. We'll bring them to Staffordshire, because it'll be a place they want to come to.
Thank you. Councillor Broom?
My colleague councillor Murray, do you think that just merely raising people's wages not only puts them into a higher tax bracket, do you think that raising the basic rate of tax, to say 20,000, would allow people to have more money in their pockets at the end of the year?
I'm going to pass that over to councillor Murray, because I think his mic's kind of working better from his button. Thank you.
Yes, average wage taxation, this is national government policy. It is actually Reform UK policy to set minimum taxation bracket of 20,000. So nobody will pay tax below, if you earn up to, and below 20,000 pound. This does bring people out of poverty. It will help everybody across the board. It's no good raising wages if you keep losing more of it just in taxation. It helps nobody that way, and that's national policy. But we do need average wage to rise in this county, we do need the higher skilled jobs, we do need the investment, the inward and outward investment. We need people to remain in Staffordshire, those brightest and best. We need the global investments coming through, those startups at a higher level, to bring in higher-level jobs. Bringing higher income means more spending on the market, basic aggregate demand, and it helps the supply chains, save our town centres, many are struggling, not just in Staffordshire, across the country. But we do not need to be taxed to the hell to every single opportunity.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm a bit confused here this morning. We're talking about selling Staffordshire, and we're currently on camera to a big audience. I'm really disappointed that we've just literally heard an awful lot from councillor Murray about we're de-skilled Staffordshire, we've got lower wages. And my colleague councillor White has already just said he's fact-checked it, and the average wage is not what he said. Yeah, okay. So what we're saying is, it is disappointing that we should be here now, giving the correct facts, selling ourselves to Staffordshire and the world, because we are the beating hearts, basically, of Staffordshire. And actually, the beating heart is not sounding so good. And actually, the beating heart is not sounding so good.
Can I have a statement? Can I have questions, please, not statements? No, no, councillor Brown, you've had your chance. Please sit down. Sit down. Thank you. Moving on to question two. Any speakers? Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I think my microphone and camera thing is now working. The fact checking, there's going to be lots of facts here today, I can tell you that now, and they have all been fact checked. We are trying to promote Staffordshire, make it the beating heart, and actually improve people's lives, not scribbling about the small stuff as you already do. But the point is this, quite simple. The average salary compared to the national rate across the United Kingdom, we are lower than everybody else. We intend to raise that average and give people better lives across Staffordshire. Thank you.
Councillor Farrell.
It wasn't actually a question on this item, it was a question for the chief executive monitor officer. Are we, do we have to ask questions or can we make statements? Can you just clarify the constitution, please?
Councillors are at liberty to make statements or to ask questions. I'm sure what we'd always ask for is brevity and clarity and that so that we can follow and recall, but yes.
Okay, councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Similarly to the last item that I spoke on, the West Midlands interchange, I welcome this progression of work with the LED lighting, something which, excuse me, something which was started off by the previous Conservative administration and they've done a spectacular job on that. So I'm glad to see that you welcome the fact that we've done this and that you're continuing the good work of the Conservatives. Clearly nothing really new to see here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hussein.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think deputy leader of the opposition has stolen my thunder. Thanks for the clarifications today, Chief Executive. Thanks.
And councillor White.
Yes, this is good news, isn't it? It's good to see this Conservative policy continuing into phase two. The reason why I wanted to speak on this item, though, is that I love listening to BBC Radio Stoke and I heard the leader on Radio Stoke last Tuesday, I think it was. And he was asked a question as to what savings the new reform administration has found since you took office. And the main saving that you raised was this. So you said LED lighting, we found this saving. I think there was some discussion about that. I just thought it might be nice to have the opportunity to correct the record on that. That isn't a saving that you found, it's a saving that you voted through in your cabinet meeting in July. But it's actually a Conservative programme, isn't it? So I thought it might be nice just to make sure we're all crystal clear on that.
Councillor Luca.
Good morning, everybody. Just responding to what's just been said about the LED lights. Yeah, completely agree. Absolutely brilliant idea. But then even the village idiot gets it right now and again. Now, we have took that further and decided to caveat, because as I said, it was actually a good policy. I mean, but using now the past, we are moving it on to the future, and this is going to be growing. So keep patting yourself on the back, but it will be a point where, I mean, you're going to hit reality.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. No, look, we're here for the people of Staffordshire. So when we see good projects and good ideas, we'll back it, even if it is a Conservative idea. I have no problem with that. But I think the point is made slightly in a different way, maybe, that, you know, overall, we don't think that you deliver the kind of value for money and the kind of services that the people of this county quite rightly demand. You say about saving money and stuff, you know, you were pushing through projects, and I quote in one of the meetings, had little or no economic value. And that was to the tune of 4.5 million pounds of taxpayers' money. And they say, well, it's not council money. Well, it is council. It is taxpayers' money, whether it comes from this council or comes from central government. So, you know, the Conservatives are penny wise and pound foolish.
Okay, as we progress further, can we make sure that we have questions or statements on the item that's on the agenda, please? On the question. Thank you. So now we'll go to question three. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Tagg.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Really welcome this item coming forward, the residual waste disposal framework. It was something that was on the forward plan before May, so it was already been brought forward by previous administration. I think it's key for the, as it says in the document, about the northern districts which have to use Hanford. Obviously, if not using Hanford, it would be landfill or expensive journeys down to Canock. So really welcome it. Just ask the portfolio holder, though, of course. Certainly before the election, we were talking publicly about the need for a transfer centre in the north in case Hansford had any issues and as an aging facility it went down. Could the portfolio update us on moves for a transfer station up in the north that would ease problems if they were to arise even after we've taken this cabinet decision just? Thank you.
Councillor Miners.
Has been approved in July, July the 16th, for the Hansford combining Staffordshire Newcastle, Staffordshire Borough Council for working through, for example, 20,000 bulk tonnes, et cetera. So the business contingency plan so far has just worked on the Hansford project. And there are other things in the pipeline that we're working on for the north and the south. And that's all working through in our portfolio. The tender has just been finalized for the Hansford. And it is very important, as we say, this gets through, because if we do have downtime, the cost is actually huge. If you Google around the rest of the UK when these facilities are not working, it's a huge cost to the consumer, to the council. And the costs are quite huge. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four. Any speakers? Question five. Any speakers? Councillor Greitrix.
Thank you, Chairman. I welcome the fact that we've got the opportunity to talk about the Better Care Fund. It's one of those principles that's very suitable for local government to work with the NHS. There are some joint projects, and it's better done jointly wherever possible. So things like preventing admissions, maintaining care, market provision, and supporting timely discharge are the sort of things where the local government can work very closely with the NHS and make sure that there's no cost shunting between the two. However, the report that we've got in front of us doesn't bear witness to the fact that there are challenges up and coming. And I'm not going to make a question as such, but I'll make a statement, and then the cabinet member can respond if he so wishes. The difficulty we've got is that the portions, although they're put together in the Better Care Fund, go separately to the local authority and to the NHS. The two portions, the one that goes to the Staffordshire County Council, is actually held at the same value. So it will deplete by 4% or thereabouts with inflation. So we're against the market in terms of having that reduction. The other thing, of course, is that those people who are part of health and care of scrutiny will be well aware that the NHS is to make some sizable reductions in its budget. Those details are not yet known. We've asked in various circles for more detail of how those reductions are to be made, but there is little detail to follow. What I'm worried about is that we're already into the year in which the budget is to be started. So there will be some fleet of foot activity necessary from the portfolio holder to make sure that whatever gets decided by the NHS can be covered in this joint funding. Certainly welcome the fact that there is joint funding, and I certainly welcome the fact we've got the opportunity through the Better Care Fund to work with the NHS. But I'm just making the statement and hoping that the cabinet member is aware of that danger.
Thank you. Any response at this point? No.
Statement again, that seems a long-winded statement, because a clarity on this.
As a point of information, that it is possible to make statements. And it is also possible, whilst I've got the floor, to make them politely and not make aspersions about people's ability. Some of the comments that we've had to my left are not really appropriate.
Thank you. Moving on to question six. Do we have any speakers? Jeremy Perd, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, and good morning fellow councillors, colleagues. It is just a few short months that I've been absent from this chamber, and yet so much has changed in that time. But I wanted to start off before asking or making a statement by just thanking those members who have, from all sides of the chamber, who have come up to me and welcomed me back to the chamber. So I found your comments both open and refreshing. And I sincerely hope that we can maintain that level of mutual trust and respect and focus on getting the best for our residents, whether they be in Wombourn, whether they be in Flash or in Nosel. Secondly, Mr Chairman, I just wanted to pick up on your comments at the start of the meeting. And thank you for your warm welcome. And wanted to thank you for your support over recent weeks. I found your leadership to be competent and sending out a really positive message about the importance of not just your role, but also county councillors. So thank you for that. The comments I wanted to address in terms of paragraph six relate to the Adult Social Care CQC assessment, which was undertaken back in February. Because I really wanted, as the previous cabinet member for Health and Care, to pay testament to the staff and the leadership who delivered such a strong result. And I know we keep talking about CQC's assessment was good. Actually, it was a lot better than good. It was a very strong good. And probably the best place that we could be within that assessment process, given all the things that are happening in the background, the growing demand, the increasing costs, unit costs, the difficulty environment that we are working within. And what CQC saw was resident centred care, innovation, and great leadership. And I just wanted to pay tribute on record to all the staff and the leadership in particular who were involved in delivering such a fantastic result. And I also wanted to put on record my thanks to the previous cabinet members who were before me because they set the framework, they set the foundations for that strong result. People like councillor Mrs Julia Jessel, councillor Johnny McMahon, and ultimately councillor Alan White. And I just want to put on record my thanks to all the staff and leadership. And I hope everyone in this chamber can support that position. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to question seven. Do we have any speakers? Moving on to question eight. Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'd just like to ask councillor Higgins, considering the long term lack of resources for services. Sorry, considering the long term lack of resources for sound services, what specific steps or additional support do you think the current administration should provide to help officers move from constantly reacting to issues towards a more...
Antonia, that's not the question. You're on the...
Antonia.
Wrong question.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry, Chair. I've got the wrong... Later.
Councillor Greitrix.
I think we're on paragraph eight of item one. Is that correct? Political assistance. I just wanted to, it's not a question, it's a series of information that we should share with the meeting. We had the call in. I don't want to rehearse the call in. One of the things that came out in the call in was that the person that we actually are looking, reform are looking to appoint, is a 27,000 pounds researcher. That was the first time that that figure was quoted. It's not been quoted in any other communications. And in fact, we have an item later on where this figure of 142 is still the quoted figure. The other thing that was brought out in the call in was the fact that the county, Staffordshire County Council, had some political assistance in 2014. I've done some research on that. The county council did not employ political assistants in 2014. They were employed through the Local Government Association. And this is something I mentioned at the call in, that the LGA is very helpful in terms of providing assistance where required, when somebody has the need for that assistance. And specifically the targeted work that that political assistance gave was in the arena of communications and also in mentoring, specific targeted areas of work. Very different to what's being proposed here, where the county is looking to employ somebody with taxpayers' money directly by the council to aid one political party. Regardless of the amount of the figure, it's the principle concerned. And we'll discuss it later in the agenda, but I just thought that information was useful at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor Hall.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I was actually present at the scrutiny committee meeting this week. So I'm guessing that the answer to the question is going to be yes. But could the leader confirm that the Conservative opposition, supported by the Green member, chose to call in this straightforward decision to employ a researcher on a one year contract, resulting in 18 people spending 90 minutes debating the matter, only to suggest that the process be repeated? And that's the point, the process be repeated. So we've just heard that they didn't know, but they did know when they asked us to go through the system once more. Now, what was equally bizarre, and perhaps this was a previous strategy to increase the average wages of Staffordshire, which actually I've looked at independent research and is 8.2% below average. So what was equally bizarre was that the opposition actually challenged the pay grade that we'd suggested and wanted it higher. It was challenged, it was a grade 10, and we reduced it, and you challenged that decision. But anyway, does the leader agree that this not only diverted officers and councillors from their duties, from serving their residents, but also the cost and time involved was equivalent discussing a four year lease on a council vehicle? Now, in my own division of Burnwood and Chase Town, residents are waiting for a long overdue medical centre that they've been promised for over a decade. It's difficult to explain to them why some members would rather waste time blocking modest, practical staffing suggestions than focus on delivering the services our communities urgently need. And that's probably why it's taken so long, because they focus on the small things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. This question, councillor Tagg stated that the Conservative group will not be taking up the officer of a political assistant, according to astounding and mystifying. And to quote, the political assistants will not lead to one more pothole being filled. Leader, can you explain to me how a political assistant will help with the repair of our highway? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. I concur with my colleagues. I'm going to say that the councillor opposite, Colin Gretchen, came over to me after the meeting and asked for some advice on this. And I said, well, maybe you want to get yourself a researcher, which I thought was quite ironic. And they were arguing for a higher salary by going it back. That's bizarre. We do have the receipt. I've got the screenshots. I'll send you the screenshots later. If it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck, quite frankly. They had two particular people over a period of time. Prior to that, they worked in the Cabinet Office, and then they came to work for Staffordshire County Council. That was in January to March 2012, 2013, this particular one. You know, they've got a different name on it, they've put a different badge, but it's the same thing. And then afterwards, they went to go and work for their Tory colleague in the Police and Crime Commissioner for six months. And even he described him as an advisor. This is on the person's own LinkedIn and job description page. The one prior to that actually worked at Leicestershire County Council and described on the actual LinkedIn page as political assistant. Quite happy to share the screenshots with you all. They worked there from 2008 to 2012, and then came to Staffordshire as a, described as a public affairs individual. In fact, this person was so good, they happily did a webpage, of which I've taken a screenshot of the webpage. And I'll share that with members if they would like that. My aim is to be different and provide high quality research and advice. I would suggest the members of... I would suggest the members opposite, get themselves a researcher and find out exactly who they're employing and what they're doing. As regards the pothole thing, yeah, you know, the idea is to make better business decisions. We want to employ somebody who can go away, find out the bits of information we want to do, bring back to Cabinet and members, and that will help formulate better business decisions, which is better for the people of Staffordshire. Thank you.
Councillor Luca.
Yeah, I've actually done a bit of research after actually sitting, just watching this particular meeting going on. And I kept on saying that, to this person, referring to them as a consultant, and that they don't need consultants. Well, I would like to actually ask, can you confirm that since January 1st, 2024, to August 2025, the overall budget is going to be almost £7.8 million that you've spent on, I mean, consultants? And also, just from January, I'm sorry, from May when we took over to now, yeah, the budget in total was going to be allotted...
Councillor Luca, this is not relevant, can you, can you sit down, please?
That would be relative, because the gentleman's talked about it, and...
Yeah, well, can you, yes, we want to move on, thank you.
I'll sit down this time, but I am...
Councillor Farrell.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to talk on this item, I was going to wait till it actually came up later in the agenda, but I was at the call-in meeting, so I would say recollections may vary from what councillor Hall said earlier. Well, yeah, so, so I'll happily go back and watch it with you over a bit of popcorn. So the point was, the call-in meeting, just to be clear to all councillors in this chamber, was to call in the decision of the leader of the council to put in £142,000 for two political assistants. Now, of course, the leader will say that was the maximum amount, but originally the decision made at Cabinet was a grade 10 appointment, and it then backtracked into what the leader of the council described as a researcher. We've already heard tonight, lots of research has clearly gone on from the Reform Party, so I don't know why you need an extra researcher, you're clearly doing a good job yourselves, but it went down from a grade 10 to a grade 7. So the political assistant then became a political researcher, so the point made in the meeting was, we're now discussing a completely different role. Now, the Conservatives have rejected the political assistant, we don't believe we need somebody to tell us how to do our jobs we're elected to do, but if the Reform Party want that, then that's absolutely your prerogative. The point you made, councillor Hall, I'm afraid is wrong, because we didn't argue up, we just said that we're now discussing a completely different grade. So I'm happy to watch that with you after the meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, thank you, that, yeah, I was obviously there as well. The name of these, the name political assistant is not ours, that's the framework that the Conservative Party put in in 1989, when this whole thing was put forward. The framework for this amount, £142,010, is a framework the Conservative Party put in. We didn't want that, didn't ask for that, never suggested that. We have always wanted a political advisor, we've been open and honest in calling it a political advisor, that person, sorry, researcher, that person will do research for us, no problem. We don't think that that should be a higher-grade individual, the Tories are trying desperately to push us onto a level 10, we thought it would save the taxpayers a few pounds, and say, no, it should be a level 7, simple as that. So in terms of this idea that, oh, we didn't know what it was, I mean, you're very good at changing names of things, I mean, I've got the receipts here, happy to share the screenshots, but let's get rid of this myth that we had a call-in for one particular role and it morphed into something else. No, it didn't, you clearly didn't understand what you were voting on and looking at, quite frankly.
Councillor Mason.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because the statements were made in the press that this won't fix potholes. Actually, I do support this, and it's for one reason. For a number of years now, Staffordshire has been sat in the corner, quiet. We haven't campaigned with a Staffordshire voice for what Staffordshire needs. We haven't been to the central government and sought out how we actually address our highways issues in a long-term strategy. We've just patched up and made do. This role will help us open some of those doors, because it's been so long since we campaigned for Staffordshire, that actually, this organisation really doesn't know the roots in there. And it's time we did, it's time we took this to government and said, we are not a conduit between Birmingham and the West Midlands and Manchester and the North West, we are Staffordshire, we have our needs, our residents, our businesses have a right to be heard. This has manifested itself, if you want evidence, in where we are with Chetwick Bridge, a bridge that's been restricted for some time, that needs to be rebuilt. However, even though the design has been done at about one and a half million pounds cost to the Staffordshire taxpayer, the administration opposite during their time did not take that to government. And we have a problem, we're Reform going to Labour, they were Tories going to Tories, but they didn't have that blue-on-blue discussion. We have written now to get that funding, and we're writing now to get the funding for Brantstone. Yes...
Councillor Mason, are you going to say something about a political assistant, or...
I'm talking about political assistance, this is what they're going to do. It isn't a...
Mr. Chairman, you allow statements for the opposition, we just sort of do one back.
Well, it isn't a statement, it's actually clarifying what a political assistant brings. It brings us the support we need to give Staffordshire a voice where it's been missing and we've sat quiet in a corner for years, and that's why we need this assistant.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Sorry, my answer's just been given, thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. It's so interesting, I'm having such a wonderful morning. First of all, you congratulate yourselves about the West Midlands interchange, which was dealt with by the previous Conservative administration and another council. The second thing that you mention is LED lighting, which was something that the Conservative administration did, and then the leader, and then the leader speaks to us and tells us that he actually copied...
Excuse me, councillor, are you going to talk about political assistance?
So political assistance, as the leader has said...
Too many questions.
So I'm talking about the political, the political assistant that the leader has just referred to as being, as being a conservative concept. My question to the leader and to other members of the Cabinet is, when are they going to stop looking at our homework and stop doing the actual copying of our homework?
Councillor White.
Thank you very much. I, I think it's a shame, councillor Hall, that you've decided, you were talking about the length of the meeting the other day, which is just democracy at the end of the day. We're perfectly entitled to call in a decision by Cabinet, and we did so, and I'm sorry if you didn't like that, but we've just spent 10, 15 minutes talking about this when it's on the agenda again a bit later, which is a shame, isn't it? Just a couple of points of clarification. Firstly, regarding the utility of a political assistant to help with lobbying for highways funding, the suggestion that there was no activity going on in lobbying for highways funding is simply incorrect. You can watch the meetings of this council back both in this chamber and in Cabinet to hear about that. And of course, it did succeed, because in the autumn of 2023, the Conservative government announced Network North with £8.3 billion worth of highways funding, because of lobbying from councils such as this. So you see, you can do this without a political assistant. Just regarding the fundamental point, though, before we get too hot under the collar about things, we have not questioned on this side the right in law for Reform to have a political assistant in this council if you wish to vote for one. What we have challenged, and the reason for the call-in, was that the reasons that were stated in the Cabinet decision were reasons that simply did not stand up to a best value assessment as required by the law. You said that you wanted a political assistant to help with devolution on a one-year contract, the devolution process, forgive me, local government reorganisation and devolution. The process of local government reorganisation that we're going through at the moment has a pause during that period of time, there's nothing for that research to do, that's why we called it in. Now, we've got this on the agenda again a little bit later, we can go into the details again, but the suggestion that the call-in, to the reason why we've started discussing this on this item, that it was in some way frivolous, or that there wasn't a good reason behind it, there was very good reason behind it, and that's democracy, I'm afraid, and I'll look forward to talking about this again later on in the council agenda.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you for that, and we will talk about it later, no doubt, but I'm going to correct you on that, because the title is the title that is given to us as political assistant. It's not ours, it's not what we chose, we always said from day one, it's an advisor, sorry, researcher, give me that, a researcher, that's it. You can call it what you like, we've always been open and honest and said, this is a researcher, this is a position. You keep going back to this thing that you want a political assistant, that is factually not true. We wanted a researcher, a level 7 researcher. You were desperate to push it up, or whoever did the assessment to make it level 10, we said the taxpayers shouldn't be paying that, we should be paying a lot less than that. In terms of the remuneration, in terms of how it operates, that is all done independently. It's not done by Reform, it's not done by the Conservative, this is done independently within Staffordshire County Council. We don't enter into that process whatsoever, so let's just get the language and the clarity right. You might call it a political assistant, because that's what the Tories put the framework in, we didn't want that, we never wanted that, we never encouraged the £142,000. I see people writing articles or doing TikTok saying it's £142,000. That is factually inaccurate for what we wanted, factually inaccurate, and it needs to be corrected, and we'll do that when we have the question later. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to question nine, do we have any speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we all welcome efficiencies and reviews of efficiency. I think what the party here in the leader's statement talks about is not new in this council, it's certainly not new in councils across this country, who have saved multi-million pounds on their budgets and prioritising frontline services, why they try and do that. So I think, well done, it's something we all do. My question is, at the Auditor Committee in July, I asked the head of Law and Democracy if there was any indication that the Doge, the Reform Doge party, were going to come and see us in Staffordshire, and we've seen they went to Kent, didn't they, I don't think they've been anywhere else since, have they? So I just asked the leader that question, if we've heard when this external Doge is coming in, it was touted a lot before the election, it was put on leaflets, et cetera, but it all seems to have gone quiet. So when will Staffordshire get the Doge team coming in? Thank you.
Councillor Farrell.
Thank you, Chair. To expand on what councillor Tagg said, actually, I agree, I think it's a really good thing that we've had an efficiency review. Previous administrations have been consistently having efficiency reviews to get the best value for taxpayers' money. But I found it interesting over the last few months, sat on committees, because this is where, you know, we do the theatre of council, but on committees, that's where hopefully the real work is done. Speaking to lots of colleagues from across the other side of the chamber, many of them have remarked, and I understand why they're in this position, that as they've joined the council, they've found out things they weren't aware of before joining the council, and that's only normal. I think lots of wannabe councillors before May were told that there was so much waste in Staffordshire County Council, and they've arrived and realised that there really isn't that much waste at all. In fact, we're running a very tight ship, so I'm very pleased that this efficiency review has highlighted that. I saw an article in the Financial Times a few days ago from Kent County Council, run by Reform as well, and they said, everyone thought we'd come in and we're going to see these huge costs, but they're just armed, any. In fact, they're asking for more money. So it's not just a Staffordshire issue, all around the country councils are facing efficiency reviews and actually realising that a well-run Conservative council is very efficient. So I welcome the review, and I welcome this statement proving that Staffordshire County Council was well-run under the Conservatives.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Responding to councillor Farrell and councillor Tagg. Yeah, the efficiency reviews are ongoing and will continue, done by my colleagues here, particularly Chris Large, councillor Large. Yeah, the Doge, the Doge went into Kent, went with Linden, and now I believe it's in West Northamptonshire, it's doing a tour of all the different Reform-controlled administrations, you know, those administrations that were previously run by the Conservatives but were rejected by the electorate and replaced by the Conservatives. Wonder why so many, you know, Conservative-controlled councils were rejected nationally, but that's for those electors to decide. Maybe they did see waste in those other areas. However, we have been doing this process, and we've found some interesting facts. I'm not going to spoil the things that we're going to bring forward at some point in time. In terms of our own internal efficiency, we've got some great offices, I've always promoted our offices, they're fantastic, done some really good stuff, but, you know, there is an awful lot of stuff out there in the public domain, out in the public domain. If you know where to look, where to search, you can find lots of interesting facts, and we've been doing a lot of searching and finding a lot of interesting facts.
Councillor White.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's interesting to note, isn't it, that there's no actual examples of waste that have been highlighted there? And, well, it's funny that you haven't got it after five months, though, so my question is, and it absolutely relates, it absolutely relates to the statements made in the election campaign. One of the cornerstones of Reform's election campaign nationally was saying that councils such as Staffordshire County Council were extremely wasteful, and that you were going to come in and find that waste. And I remember people like Mr. Farage and Mr. Tyce saying that it was going to be really easy, you'd find it within weeks, and you'd make massive savings. So will you be publishing the efficiency review? You've had five months to go at it. Will you be publishing that as a report so that we can see where the waste is? Because I don't think there is any, is there?
Councillor Large.
Thank you. About the efficiency reviews, well, we're not doing the headline, and we'll come back on to this a little bit later on, okay? But we're talking about waste, and I think it's a difficult, how do you describe that word, waste? So let's give you one example of waste, where you're not in control of the business. How about half of a department, over five people, engaged on a day rate, part of the service, day rate at £495 a day? Some of those have been here for three years, that's millions, millions. We found one person who was on a temporary contract for £100,000 a year for 10 years, temporary. So is that waste? Could we replace that person? Who knows? But our efficiencies, we're not going to start grabbing headlines, we haven't done that. When we came in, we said we'd lift up the bonnet, we said we'd take the engine out and we'd start to rebuild. And so far, we've actually started to do that, and where we've worked with the officers, we started to make savings all in different places. The efficiency reviews that we started were because the finances were not technically all in one place, the headcount were not all in one place with the finances, and we spent three weeks pulling all that together, but we then spent the remaining six weeks, and I don't know why you're smiling, because for the simple reason, you spend the majority of your time working on briefing notes. You've never done a deep dive in this organisation, never. Thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
Yeah, you know, they all want the quick headlines, as I say, we're here to do a proper professional job, we take our time, we do it due diligently. You're right, we came in, absolutely came in. We thought we were going to go through the process, do a deep dive, discuss it with the officers, portfolio by portfolio by portfolio, everywhere, everything is up for review, nothing is sacred. And as I said, I'm not going to sort of say what we're going to release now, I'll leave my colleagues to do that in their portfolios, and particularly Chris, I think he's going to have a lot of fun putting forward some bits and pieces here. But, you know, this is a serious business, this is taxpayers' money. You smile, it's quite flippant. We actually do take this responsibility about the fact of taxpayers' money. I know you're interested in the small stuff, this, you know, it's the sort of indicative of the Conservative group there, letterbox view, thin overhead, small view, concentrate on the level 7 employee, when there's 4,800 other employees that you didn't scrutinise for 90 minutes, let's, you know, step out of the playground and into the boardroom.
We're going to move on now to question 10. Do you hear that, Colin Grealish? Okay. Right then, Colin.
Just to make a point, we've asked for some big detail, and the illustration that we've had, and I can't remember the details, but it's five people having a day out for £95 or something like that, and yet you're criticising the Conservatives for small-mindedness. £95 or something like that, and yet you're criticising the Conservatives for small-mindedness. We want some big figures to demonstrate what you've said in your literature you're able to find. We haven't had that.
In regard to the, into that last statement, the cabinet member has spoken and the leader has spoken, so we're concluding that question. So we're going to move on now to question 10. Do we have any speakers? Anne Edgell, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good morning, everyone. Yes, at the last council meeting, I noticed about the utility companies causing major disruption on our highways. And I'm really pleased to see in the local press and that, that cabinet members take that on board. So could I please ask, ask how that work is progressing, and where we're at, and is it getting any replies from the utility companies? And are we going to see some proper progress on this problem? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mason?
It's mixed. We've worked out and we've published what we want to change, and I think they're sensible, achievable, non-contemptious changes in terms of giving us control over utilities and third parties. I'm pleased to say, I've written to all the local MPs, and a number have responded, both Labour and Conservative, saying they support this. A number of the most vocal local MPs about the trouble it causes haven't bothered to reply yet, but I'm hoping that will change. We have utility companies, and developers are very keen, or sorry, developers and some of the utilities like broadband, very keen to work with us. And we have the major utilities companies threatening us with legal action. But we won't back down because we think it's right for Staffordshire, it's right for the businesses and the residents, and it's right for us to have enough control that we're able to coordinate and manage these works to the benefits of the residents who actually own the asset. We're just custodians over here. So it is going well, there's a long way to go, and unfortunately, the government's select committee review output was very disappointing. Basically, they rejected doing anything because it probably in the too-hard pile. But we're going back on that, and with the support of some of the local MPs, we're hoping to get that overturned and some action as quickly as we can. And I know this isn't a political issue, I know we all support this, and we all think it's necessary. So I thank you for your support on it.
councillor Clissid?
Good morning, everyone, good morning, Chair. Just a question based on, obviously, the review of highways operations. For me, we could see Amy's been paid £100 million a year. Around £30 million of that is retained in profit after the subcontractor's costs. When we look at similar countries across the country, that's normally 15% net profit, between 15 and 20. Yet when I look around Burntwood, we can see that out of the category three potholes, there's still around, across, not just my area, but the whole of Staffordshire, nearly 400 days on average to make those repairs across the board. So just want to answer, give a question to councillor Mason, please, on that one.
I'll just go through a few more speakers, otherwise we're going to be going backwards and forwards, okay? councillor Farrell?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for this. I think we all share the frustrations when it comes to roadworks. Where I am in Lichfield Road South, we recently had the Coles Hill Street, one and a half million pound resurfacing, and that's still ongoing. And I'd like to thank my residents for their patience, because that has shut a very important road by Drator Manor for many weeks, but it is essential work. I think it is a difficult job councillor Mason has, managing this project. I think you're going to please some people and upset others by announcing this. But I have an experience, I think maybe shared by many councils in this room, but I also have the experience of being on the previous council, and my inbox is full all the time with pothole issues. But what I have found, and this isn't a dig, it's just a question, I suppose, to councillor Mason, is that the speed and the way that the potholes and the road defects are dealt with now, as opposed to maybe a year ago, has slightly slowed down. So I don't know if that's something you can go away and have a look at. I think it is, I think it's possibly a case of prioritising certain areas, potholes over others. But I think it's really important to our residents that, you know, the pothole at the end of their road is the most important thing in their life, and it is really, really important that we as councillors recognise that. So maybe you could go away and work out a way of investing in not just dealing with the bigger projects, but making sure the smaller projects are done as well. Thank you.
We've got one more speaker, then we'll go to councillor Mason, and then we'll go back to other questions. So councillor Wilson?
Would you mind if I defer to my colleague and come back afterwards?
councillor Luca?
Yeah, obviously, you said that you, in the past, this is my question, I'm just leading up to it, that you set up limited companies which you run rail. Could I ask councillor Large, when he does his speech, just to actually mention how many of these companies actually failed and the cost of the failure?
councillor Mason, do you want to respond to the questions previously?
The pothole questions, yeah, I can respond to the pothole questions and the question over there. Well, thank you for the support. Have repairable potholes slowed down? No, it hasn't. We may have altered the approach to them and the priorities to them. One of the things we have been trying to deal with is this issue of the disruption. And the disruption isn't just utilities coming in and digging up the road, but it was actually our own planning of our own financial expenditure, where we were putting too many works into the same area. So you may have perceived, and I know it's been said, that we gave everybody three months' holiday over summer, very widely by certain members, but that isn't the reality. We have moved works around, we have reacted to what the public have told us. We are meeting your funding profile, and I thank you for quickly putting that in place, because it came at you very late last year. And that's no easy task. But we've also changed it so we're not causing the disruption to the residents and the damage to the businesses. That means we're moving works to other areas in order to free up some of our towns so they're still functioning as networks. So hopefully that explains a bit what you may think you're seeing. But we in no way are slowing repairs down, we are trying to combine them, and I'll talk about that more later, probably. In terms of the response about the investment, we invest a lot of money into highways, and a lot of that goes via, as you said. Our aim has got to be to make sure that as much of that money as possible hits the road, hits the pavements, hits the verges, hits the streetlights and deals with the gullies. That's got to be it. We've got to minimise the on costs, the enabling costs, the management costs, and maximise the amount of money that goes into the ground. And that is what our new revised approach is about, trying to achieve. So about trying to achieve a long-term position where we start to tackle the backlog, and there's 31,000 defects in the backlog that we push along at any one time. There isn't enough money, that's a fact, there's never enough money, and we push those along. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't try and tackle it in a slightly different way. And we need to get on top of that backlog, start to move things along, start to repair category threes in well under 400 days, more like the 30 days or so that actually the target is. And then get into a more stable state where the good preventative work that the council does also, on dressing the roads, becomes the primary way that we keep our network in a good condition. There's a lot of work to do, and I accept, potholes are everybody's bane, and that pothole in your road is the most important thing there is. But there are 31,000 defects that we haven't got planned or funded at this point in time. And that's not new to us, it was the same with the last administration. And we need to recognise that, and we need to look to see how we deal with it and do things better. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Tagg?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think on this one, I'll take the tact of, I think it's a rushed decision that come out, I think we're scrutinising here, the delegated decision, are we not, to introduce the three-month pause? That was rushed out on Facebook, on a post, before the delegated decision was even published, without proper prior consultation or explanation. And the three-month pause on non-essential roadworks comes at precisely the time of year when road maintenance is most effective, most efficient, and least disruptive. We on this side have raised concerns about the decision that reduces access to our road network, not only by utilities but by our own highway staff, as this three-month pause effectively does, and the decision the portfolio has taken. And this may lead to delays on road maintenance programmes, including capital investment programmes, and increasing claims against the authority due to deterioration on road conditions, higher costs and extended working hours when emergency repairs, more complaints and inquiries from the public, delays to housing and business improvement, that we were going to be the heart of the county, the heart of the country, where we were going to be this prosperous area where we need businesses and growth and housing growth for that, and the disruption to utility service connections, of course. And we have problems with utilities, we've always had that, and there is a working group in this council that was set up under the pressure of councillor Wellman, who can't be here today, I'm a member of that, and there are members from across this chamber working on that. And I think this does preempt that as well, without having proper scrutiny of the decision that was taken. These aren't just speculative concerns I'm putting forward, they were documented risks acknowledged in the by the council's own officers, and yet despite this, the cabinet member has chosen to proceed with a pause during the most efficient season for doing such works. Now, the risk analysis warns that reducing access to road network would lead to delays in the start of road projects and street works, affecting not only the council's own investment programme, including fixing potholes, the lower-ranking potholes, as has been mentioned by the portfolio elder, but also third-party developments such as the new high з housing I talked about, but also fibre broadband rollout, and, you know, everybody has in their mailbox about residents that would like to have faster connections. And then the upgrade of power and water infrastructure, we know that that continues, we've got an aging infrastructure in this country. In the spring, this Conservative administration allocated £30 million to accelerate repairs and tackle the pothole backlog. Investment was made to prevent exactly the kind of deterioration disruption that we are now possibly facing because of this decision. So two months into this pause, will the portfolio publish clear data on how the pause has impacted the backlog of road repairs and works across this county? Because there is growing concern from many residents that routine defects, such as the category three potholes, and also worn-out road markings and damaged pavements and all the other things, are being affected by this ill-thought-out, rushed decision. Thank you.
councillor Greitrix?
Chairman, I support councillor Tagg's view that this is the wrong decision, and it's been rushed, for the reason that he gave about the wrong time of year, the summer being the best month to do the repairs. But there are other issues. What I foresee is that the majority of the, I think, 31,000 calls that councillor Mason referred to, and I do sympathise with him, because it's some portfolio to look after, those 31,000 calls are generally category three, they're non-urgent, non-essential. The problem will be that delaying those by three months will not make them go away, they'll actually, some of them become category two, and they'll become bigger and more expensive to treat. And the other issue that you will have is when you finish the embargo, people will think that their, as councillor Farrell has said, their pothole's the most important one. So they will think that whenever D-Day comes and you're back on the streets, they will say, mine's going to get dealt with. But they'll still have four to six months to wait, and that will aggravate members of the public even more. So the delay will not make the problem go away, it won't save any money, it'll actually increase the cost, and it'll make it worse for people losing faith with the system. And once they lose faith in the system, they'll stop logging the calls, and it will become harder to catch up. There is one other factor which I need to bring to the attention of members, and hopefully this is something councillor Mason can respond to, and I don't know if it's parochial to my division, but I believe that I have a number of residents who've complained about the flag policy, and I need to raise that, because there has to be a categorisation of whether these are essential or non-essential works. My point of information is about whether it's essential work. The reason I'm saying it's essential work is that residents have contacted me, particularly concerned about the, I'll call it right-wing campaign, and the adulterated flags.
Colin, it's a strategic view of highways, it's a strategic view of highways.
Sorry, Chairman?
Strategic view of highways. So, yeah.
My comment is about the highways. Is it essential work for those flags to be dealt with, the ones that are breaking the law?
councillor Cooper?
They love the sound of their own voices, don't they? No wonder they got thrown out after god knows how many years. I didn't realise, yeah, I didn't realise that St George's flag and the Union flag of the United Kingdom was offensive to the fact that being in the United Kingdom, England, to everybody here, quite frankly. What I heard, what I heard now, basically in brief, because he did waffle on, was we spent 14 years and all these problems have built up, and by the time, you know, we're looking at it and reviewing it, it's going to cause issues. You're going to own that, because they're your problems, not our problems. Pete is going to come in in a minute and just sort of answer some questions on this. We had gridlock in towns across the summer, if I remember rightly, residents couldn't get anywhere. You couldn't get in and out of Stafford at one point in time for a variety of reasons. We have to look at that, take a view and an opinion. You know, we've actually had, the police authorities actually congratulate us on the fact that we can get round the towns now, quite frankly. It's not perfect, work needs to be done, but I think Pete and the team have done a fantastic job. And I'll let him expand on that, but thank you very much.
One minute, we're all supportive that we're taking action to try and stop the disruption, and the next minute, you're against us taking action to stop the disruption, you want more work out there. So, interesting position. I've tried to communicate this a number of times, and it clearly isn't hitting home. We did not suspend all works. We did not suspend all non-essential works. What we did do was ask for a 12-week hiatus of those non-essential works in the specific areas where disruption was already at a saturation level, and where people and businesses could not function any longer, particularly Stafford and Burton. And that was the right thing to do. Throwing more works into an area that's already at breaking point is folly. It lacks the ability and the strength to take the right decisions. Well, we weren't going to do that. The funding envelope hasn't changed, we may have well moved works to other areas that weren't saturated, and that is how we're going about it. The follow-on to that, that originally affected about 7% of our network, the follow-on to that is we're now making sure we don't get back into that summer position. Stafford will not be an escape room again, as it was labelled in Parliament, because that is our, it is our job to make sure that doesn't happen. So we are looking to make sure works don't conflict, and it's a prime example in Lichfield, where I know it's been claimed we've cancelled the works on Burton Road, and they're never going to happen. The reality was, we took time to negotiate with the developer who's doing six months of works on London Road, the diversionary route, to negotiate a two-week window where they will suspend their works, and we can close our road and do our works. That's doing it the right way, not doing it the political way.
Thank you all. Just take this last round of questions and then go back to either Ian or councillor Mason. I'll start with councillor White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So whenever highways come up, you always get an awful lot of speakers, don't you? And that's because it's the thing that our residents speak to us about the most, it's understandable, and we all know that we've got a long-term problem in this country, that not enough investment has been put into councils like this to help us to do the job that our residents want us to do. And the devil is in the detail in terms of how we try and use the funding that we've got. I'm really grateful to councillor Mason for investing a lot of time with me to talk about this one-on-one a couple of months ago, when the pause, or however we want to describe it, was put on. want to describe it was put on in the summer. Really appreciated that, along with the leader, he's the councillor amongst the Reform Cabinet who's spent the most time with me, really grateful to the leader as well for the time he's spent with me. The devil is in the detail on this and we will scrutinise it, but I don't doubt you've got good intentions in terms of what you're doing. I appreciate the comments that you've made about how difficult this is and, you know, things like negotiating with developers about access. Stafford, yes, a lot of roadworks in Stafford, but that's because the government funding to fix those roads came with a time limit and the devil is always in the detail, isn't it? So we will scrutinise, we will be firm, but we will endeavour to be fair, but we do see this as a shared challenge for us all, we've got a difficult hand to play on this. We don't have to argue about everything in this chamber in a confrontational way, it's a shared challenge. We all want to get the roads fixed, don't we? So more strength to your arm, we will support and challenge, but hopefully in a positive way.
Thank you for that, councillor White. Councillor Wilson? No, you don't, no, okay. Okay, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I hope I won't be jeered at or giggled at because obviously councillor Cooper, I heard you encouraged playground behaviour outside earlier and so please, we are democracy, we're allowed to speak and no, you said encourage giggling and jeering and I heard it outside and you know I heard it outside, so you can't say not. Right, so councillor Mason.
Point of order, have you?
Councillor Mason.
You lead your statement.
I'm so pleased and you know how hard I know you're working and it's really fantastic what you are trying to do for our highways. One thing I haven't heard anything about is actually an efficiency review of Amy. And what I'd like to say, this week, I've been fiddling on my phone to find, make sure I get the facts, on the 4th of October, in my Needwood Forest division, I have a resident who documented the inefficiencies of Amy and I'm just going to be as quick as I can, but it's really important. So the potholes on this lane, they were going to do, it was supposed to take two days and in the end it took them five days. They only worked a couple of hours per day because tarmac didn't get to them and in the end, the man-hours for three to four men, site for five hours, were they four days and yet they're only there for two hours. We need, we desperately need an efficiency review of Amy. And again, and the second point is, on my way here, the road closure signs, I've mentioned it before, you're aware I've mentioned it before, road closure signs, a school bus went down this road closure sign, I went past, realised I couldn't get far, so I turned round, followed it down this road and basically the road was open, you could get past, but there were five sets of road closure signs. Please, please, would you look into that as well? Thank you very much for your time and I hope I can sit down quietly.
Thank you. Councillor Hall.
Oh, yeah, there's been a lot of backslapping and advice coming from the previous administration, which I find quite ironic and I'll bring the voice of the resident actually into this, into this chamber. A resident in Stafford described it as a social experiment, what's been happening over the last five years. And the gridlock has been unbearable, the impact on businesses must be uncalculable and I think this just sums it up. The A34 runs for 151 miles from Manchester to Winchester, it was closed in both directions for a while, guess where? In Stafford. So I think really that's what councillor Mason's trying to avoid and it gives me great pleasure to bring the voice of the resident into this, into this chamber. Thank you.
Councillor Luca.
Colleagues in here, I actually basically refer to our flag as a criminal flag. I'm sorry, but as an Englishman, I will never ever be.
Councillor Luca, please.
Follow my flag.
Councillor Luca, can you sit down?
And if I say the flag on the pole, I will always be proud of it.
Councillor Luca, please. Councillor Cooper, please.
I refer to councillor Mason first.
Okay, councillor Mason.
Just want to respond to councillor Brown. I'm obviously, can't inspect every work site, so I'm not aware of those details you've just said. If you can send them me, we'll look into it. But what I can say, the efficiency review and the roadmap we're setting out goes across everything in highways. The way we deliver, the strategic approach to how we want to deliver, how we get the money into the ground, how we minimise costs. As part of that, there will be no stone that isn't part of making that roadmap a reality. And that includes the efficiency of our suppliers, so I hope she's reassured by that.
Councillor Lodge.
The problem we've got here, the problem we've got here is always the same problem. It's the same as the NHS and that is throwing enough money at it to fix a pothole. Everybody over there, everybody, all our electorates all say, fix that pothole. When we first came in, councillor Mason and myself, the first thing we looked at was the beast. This beast, 136 million of money going into roads. There's 400 people, there's Amy. When you get a big beast like Amy, the first question you've got to ask yourself is, how efficient is Amy? Who's checking what Amy's doing? Now, listen, you guys on the previous administration had Amy there for many, many years, okay? And if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always got. So the first thing we've done is, is not throw more money at it, which I'll come back into my statement a bit later on, about this year, you threw a few more million quid into potholes, in fact you said it, and I questioned that by saying, you gave more millions to potholes, but more, that just went to Amy and Amy didn't put millions onto the tarmac. When you do an efficiency review that's as big as this with all these people involved, it takes time. What we've been doing is focusing on the effect and not the cause. And my point is, and that is we have to unpick it. When we first came in, the first thing we said was, where's Mr Pothole? Where's Mrs Ditch? No accountability. Everybody's got a job, but nobody's got accountability. When we said, how efficiently do you measure Amy? Do you do that walk? Do you check them? Do you go right down the line and check them? No. No, that didn't happen, that's not happened. So when you got to unpick it and rebuild it, that takes time. So what I'm saying to the electorate out there, be patient when you're trying to unpick something and rebuild it. Between now and the end of the year, we will rebuild the contract with Amy, we will rebuild the new efficiency and we will take more control of how we put tarmac onto our road. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Higgins, did you want to?
Just wanted to say something to councillor Brown. Councillor Brown, your question, it's a simple little question, back to you please. If you think why aren't Reform, you know, looking at Amy and reviewing Amy, you were the administrator for many years, why did you?
Sorry Janet, sorry Janet, it's a question, it's a question for the opposition, for these people.
I'll have to go through?
Yeah, you're not going to, you can't ask the opposition.
I can't answer her question.
No, no. Go on then.
People want to see us, you know, we are representatives of the people of Staffordshire, they don't want dour faces. The underlying problem with all these things, all these topics, is they're like a child in the playground, they've had the toys taken off by the electorate. So that's why they're playing in the playground and they're not prepared to get out into the boardroom.
Okay, right, now moving on to question 11, do I have any speakers? Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman, and I promise I'll behave on this one. I mean, this, this subject is so, so important to us, so important to the people and the children of Staffordshire and this really is not a political football that we can kick at all. I really want to ask the question and I really look forward to seeing the paper that's going to come forward from this cabinet with the solution to this problem and keeping the government's feet to the fire and making sure that we get a resolution for our most vulnerable children in this county. So I'd like to ask the cabinet member, what's the plan? Where are we going with this, please?
Councillor White.
Yep, thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, I think this is another example of an area where the less we're using it as political football, the better. We all know that the root of the problem with SEND is a, is a system that doesn't work well and we're all eagerly anticipating the outcome of the government's white paper, which I understand, having watched, mentioned I enjoy listening to Radio Stoke, I also watch Newsnight, I saw Bridget Philipsen, the Education Secretary on there a couple of nights ago, being asked whether she was delaying the publication, I'll say that again with my teeth in, the Secretary of State for Education, Bridget Philipsen, was asked whether she was delaying publication of the white paper on special educational needs until the end of the Labour deputy leadership contest because she's worried that people won't like what's in there. I very much hope that that is published on the first day that it's available, we need this. Our children and families of SEND children need this, we need this system to work. Anything we can do together in this council to make it work better, we will want to do. So this is another area, a bit like highways, where yes, of course we'll scrutinise, but really we just want to have one voice in this council, which is to say we need a better SEND system for our children. So you have our support in that endeavour.
Councillor Higgins, did you want to say anything? Any response?
Some notes, came prepared, just in case. I have got some notes regarding what we've been doing and we have been, as a council, you know, we've got the new structure coming in place in January and we are working as much as we can locally to do what we can to improve the SEND system. We have put in place a district nine which we put in place in July to try and catch up with the backlog of ECHPs, which we are doing quite well. We've got 300 by December and we're over 150 now, so we're working well with that. And we are doing the best we can, we're lobbying government, we're having talks with MPs, all the things we can try and do locally, we're doing, but as you say, we need to wait for that white paper because there's a lot of things we can't do locally. So we appreciate your support. As you say, it's not political, this isn't, SEND is about children, about real, real people and their future, young people's lives depend on us working together to make the best we can for the SEND system, well, the whole education system really in Staffordshire. So thank you for that and we'll, you know, we'll keep on doing what we can to improve.
Thank you. Councillor Brew?
Thank you very much, Chair. With my colleague councillor Higgins, would she agree with me that we do value families with SEN children? We've got one case in Biddles, she's been waiting three years for some respite care and that we will fight for them to get them the service that they deserve.
Councillor Higgins.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we do value all children, whether they've got SEND or whether they're, you know, mainstream children, all children are very important to us. And there are issues unfortunately, like the one that you've just said, about the certain families, certain cases that seem to have got lost. And all I can say is if you bring those cases to me, me and Alex and the SEND team here at Staffordshire Council, we're looking to that and get a positive outcome, but you need to let us know because certain things are happening that we don't know, so we do need councillors to keep us informed of these issues so we can deal with it and solve the problems.
And councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. I would concur with my colleague across the chamber there, councillor White, this isn't the political football, this is a very serious bit with children. We absolutely want to do our best across this chamber to help as many kids as possible. We know that the department's gone through challenging times, it's going through a whole transformation process, we're hoping to see some benefits. It's going to be a bumpy road, but we all know that resources nationally are extremely short and very tight, like everybody else around the country. If this issue is not dealt with, quite frankly, I'm told that half the councils across England and Wales will go bankrupt. So it is imperative that this particular government get their act together, sort out their own membership and find some money to help the most vulnerable kids in society.
Well, after that feisty start to the day, I need a coffee. We are now going to adjourn and please be back in your seats at midday. We have a special county meeting for the appointment of Honorary Freeman and Alderman, so please, now's your chance to have a break. Thank you.